Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our March 25th Select Board meeting. I'll call this meeting to order at 7:03. If everyone could join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start this evening with public comment. Per the Select Board policy, public comment is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between citizens in the Select Board. It is a citizen's opportunity to express his or her opinion on issues of town business. The Board may respond to a public comment by taking it under consideration when deliberating on an agenda item or referring the item to the administration for appropriate action or response. Public comment shall be for a period of up to 15 minutes, with speakers being allowed three minutes to present their material. Is anyone here for public comment?
Donald Stewart, 52 Prospect Street. Congratulations, sir. How many years, 16?
Twelve.
Twelve.
Not as much as you. I think you still hold the record.
I know. And I just to make one comment. Over the years since 1991, yourself and Rosemary and I have served in that area, this town has been so successful, and it continues to be successful, with the extension of the schools. And it's a sign of good times, because it wasn't that good back in the 90s, but a lot of things got done, a lot of things got built. But congratulations for serving, and anybody needs any answers, just give me a call.
Thanks, Donald.
See the town fathers, mothers, and grandfathers here as well today. Just respect, John, just respect. My name is Mark DeSalvo. I had the privilege in 2012 of coming back to elected office with this class of Mr. Valancourt. And I was compelled to come here today just to say thank you. In that time period, during those days, as you recollect, there were a lot of messages throughout our community, one which still exists as fair, open, and efficient, as many might recognize, but a far more important one was "One Community." That was Dick Valancourt's message. That's Dick Valancourt's life. That's Dick Valancourt's legacy, that we are One Community, that he has always strived to do the very best to provide good faith judgment and guidance to our community. And as the leader of the Art Town Meeting legislative function, I wanted to say specifically thank you to you, Dick. We've been through some tough town meetings together. We've been through lots of ups and downs as a community, but you have always striven to fulfill that one commitment you made to our community, "One Community." You are it. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Mark.
You're welcome.
I can't help myself, Dick. It's just too much. Stan Libbert, 43 Stone Cleve Road. The one thing I wanted to say about you, Dick, is you have always been, I think, the calming force on our Select Board during your 12-year term. You've always been the one that seemed to be able to find the middle ground to help people come together, to come up with solutions. And I personally have always appreciated that contribution that you've made. I think it's been extremely important in some very key points in the last 12 years, when we've been at places where we couldn't quite get to some mutual agreement, and you've always helped us get there. So I just wanted to thank you very much for that contribution. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
If there's no other public comment, we'll move on to our governmental reports. And we're going to start with the Rexplex Complex update. Well, I guess it's the Rexplex update. Plex and complex, that's kind of twice. The complex complex. It is complex.
So as you know, I've been years waiting to be before you giving this presentation. When I came in 2018, Andrew Mayo, the prior town manager, assigned me this project, and it is five-plus years later, and we're finally getting to the goal line. So this is a visual of the Rexplex, or the Middle School Fields and Recreation Complex. I also brought the larger board, which it's much easier to see the individual elements. But this truly is a structure that offers something for everyone. So some of the elements are playground, walking trails, and exercise courts, two-half basketball courts, multipurpose courts, an amphitheater, baseball and multipurpose fields, softball fields, informal recreation areas, outdoor events, and multipurpose field, bocce and shuffleboard, and outdoor eating area, concession stand, a plaza with a gazebo, restrooms, and of course pickleball, and an expanded parking lot. And I thought it would be a good idea to bring you through the timeline for this process, just to show how long it has been. So I'm not going to read every one of these elements, but starting in 2015 is when a group of residents came forward for this project. So this project truly started in 2015, and Rosemary will know, being on that committee, that they met multiple times. So in 2015, the selectmen approved the CPC request, and then town meeting approved an additional $50,000 for the project. And then in 2016, the full survey of the site began. We contracted with Waterfield. The preliminary design was presented to the Board at that time. And then the Middle School Fields Improvement Committee holds the first two of 19 public meetings. It has been said that this was not a public process. I want to assure the public that this very much was a public process, with 19 of these public meetings taking place. Through 2017, the meetings continue. CPC approves additional funding for the project design. The Finance Committee also endorses this project, and the Fields Committee holds 11 through, I'm sorry, 10 through 14 meetings in that year. And then we execute our contract with Waterfield. Moving into 2018 is when the original CPC request came. The CPC approves that project request, and the Field Committee again holds 17, 18, and the 19th meeting. And in 2019 is where you'll see the activity on the project really comes to a halt. The first of two Planning Board meetings takes place, and then we have the land case that's filed in April of 2019, and that's when we start the litigation and the executive sessions between administration and the Board. Through 2020, and I'm not going to read all of these different litigation issues, but through 2020, 2021, and 2022, COVID was not friendly. A lot of these hearings and meetings were delayed, canceled, and so really, unfortunately, litigation action didn't really start until 2022, in the late 2021. And then again, we had executive session with the Board, '23 to '24. The hearing in the civil case took place. There've been status conferences with the civil case. And then in October, the court found in favor of the plaintiff on one of the three cases, on the adverse possession case. Right now, the case is in land court, pending a decision by the judge. It is the same judge that holds the other two cases as well. So what has this delay had impactually on the budget? So here is the budget in 2018, and you'll see it's a little over $9 million, 9.2. And when you fast-forward to 2024, as you can see, the elements of the budget have greatly increased, so that the cost of the project has nearly doubled. So on the left-hand side, you will see the total 18.3 million. This illustration is broken up into the non-CPA-eligible items. As you know, the TURF and any related expenses cannot come from CPC funding. And then on the other side, you will see what can be funded through the CPC. So what is the funding plan? So I know Bill Callahan is here to talk about CPC's funding plan, but for the town, the non-community preservation funding, we're looking at a 3.8 million bond over 25 years. Adding that, plus the million dollars that we've had, and including the booster funding, the debt capacity that we currently have within our general fund can cover the annual payments. And these would be the annual payments, starting in 2026 and going through 2050. And I still may be working here. The average, if we had to fund it, if we didn't have the debt capacity, the average impact on the taxpayer would be $21 a year. So the question had come up, what is the impact in terms of the space, and does that have an impact, the case on the project? And the answer is no. So if you can see the red-lined version at the top that goes around the perimeter, the loss of the civil case does not impact where the fields will be situated. You know, that was very important. We didn't want to change. So even not using that land, we had an alternative plan that this is what would happen. We only needed to develop this plan subsequent to the litigation. So the question was asked, if we just went with this plan, you know, could we have started this project back in, you know, 2018? And the answer is no, because we did not know about the court case at that time. So obviously, we would have started here if we had the opportunity. And we have received many letters of support for our CPA grant, or our request, from various sources in various youth clubs and the youth baseball associations. We know this has a lot of support in the public, so we're just trying to get this project over the finish line. And I know Bill will discuss the CPC aspect of the project. Any questions?
So I guess I'll just add, because I know there was some talk about this. We will not need a disclusion to bring this forward. We are able to do it within capacity due to the way Facilities Management Plan 2 is coming on, and the debt holdover that we currently have, although I may recommend, over the next year or two, using that debt holdover to make large payments on this bond, so that we can pay it off faster, because it's really, having a $3.9 million bond for 25 years, and then having that interest accrue is kind of silly, right? And there's no penalties for us to pay it off in advance. So we may do that, but we do not need an exclusion. It is within the levy, and so there's really no impact to taxpayers, but we calculate it anyway, in case people wondered.
Can we use the word that the people might understand better? Is it overrun?
No overrun.
Yeah.
Yes. No overrun.
If you do decide to pay it off early, when does that decision get made? Is that each year at the budget time? Say, okay, we got a little extra cash, let's put it towards this?
Each year during budget time.
Okay.
So right now, we've been using, like, we're using the debt holdover this year to put a million dollars towards it, to make it 3.8 instead of 4.8, which is what it was originally. The 4.8 payment would have been more than I think we probably would have wanted to take on. So next year, if we were still holding that capacity, we'll make a decision, do we need that for something that's operational at that point? Sometimes, the last few years, we've used that for a capital item, a large capital item. Or do we want to just continue to try to pay this debt down faster? And so it's an option either way. The CPC is going to have shorter debt terms, so it may make sense for us to try to pay it off in the same timeline that they have.
And you referenced, I think, a million dollars in booster funding as well? Does that, did I mishear that?
It's a combination. So they have both 490,000.
They already have, committed?
Already have, yes.
Okay.
The health side.
And is there a plan for them to raise more? Or that, because I think those were probably the...
They will be doing some private fundraising as well. Yes, they have mentioned that.
So the booster funding is like, remember our last meeting? We accepted donations that was the money that we've been collecting in there.
Okay. So whatever we get allows us just to pay down the bond faster? Is that kind of the idea?
Yes. Or maybe if we decide that there's some things we want to do as an add alt. So for instance, one thing that we've discussed is doing the amphitheater as an add alt, because the amphitheater is $700,000 of non-TPC-eligible expenses.
Okay.
So it may make sense to bid it without that, in with that, so that we can see kind of where those prices come in. So in some future iteration, we may want to use that holdover to do that amphitheater, which we have more information. So those are decisions that we can make as we continue to do future capital plans.
The call for an amphitheater is not as much for fields. So that's something we could wait on.
And we're doing the stage.
And we're doing the stage, yes. The only people that might be mad at us are the Shakespeare Theater.
Yeah. We don't want that.
Well, we'll deal with that later.
Do we have a high little timeline on when construction's going to start, when it'll land? Do we have any?
So we're going to apply for building permits soon, so that we can have our building permits in place. And then it would just be basically a bidding process after town meeting.
Isn't that funny, that you have to apply for building permits?
Yeah. We'll apply for a permit.
And how recent are these construction numbers, or estimates?
Last three months.
Yeah.
Okay.
Very recent. We ask them to redo all of them, just to get, you know, today's prices, so.
Great.
I think it was in your timeline, but we did win the CPC case about the first lawsuit about that we were using the funds.
We were using the funds correctly, yes.
I just want to, yeah, make sure that everybody realizes that. I just want to thank you all. This has been such a labor of love, and I know the community is so excited for it, and everybody just can't wait to see shovels in the ground, so I'm excited that we're moving forward.
And I have to publicly thank Rick Green, who has been such a force behind us. And, you know, I said to him, I saw him at the Night to Shine on Saturday, and I said, "This is my first construction project, so you got to be there for me." So he said, "He'll definitely be there for me." But he has really pushed for this, him and, you know, the others that were in that initial group, you know, Rosemary included. So this is a really needed project, and I'm very excited for it to come to fruition.
It's a great group, and Rick is a terrific leader in this group. He just knows his stuff inside and out, and very respected amongst the team. But thank you for mentioning everybody.
I'm just really pleased that there is some movement on this. It's going to be so nice. I get asked about it still multiple times a weekend. To be able to actually have something to say is going to be wonderful. So thank you all for your hard, hard work to get us here.
The sports teams are so excited, like, it will really alleviate some of the strain that they're having on field use. So it's, they're just growing. We're growing as a town, right? And then we have a lot more kids playing soccer, and baseball, and lacrosse, and softball, and all that stuff.
So we want to care for the fields we have, and this will help with that, because they aren't able to use them the way that they're supposed to be.
I didn't know that, that you had to rest fields, but apparently you do.
Just a reminder to you, and we'll remind people of this, especially when we come forward to do the article, this is going to be a two-thirds vote at town meeting, so that's important to remember, because it's debt, so.
Yep. Thank you for that.
Thank you so much.
Are you going to plug in?
I should plug my own.
Oh, all right.
I'm ready. A minute, sir.
Next up, we'll have our presentation from the Chair of CPC, Bill Callahan.
I got the red adapter and everything. Phil's ready to go.
Look at that, I like that. Fancy.
He's got a multi-adaptor.
You need one of those, Dave.
Okay. All right, just one second. Okay. Okay, I think we're good. All right, good evening. Bill Callahan, here as representing the Community Preservation Committee as the chair with our funding recommendations for fiscal year 2025. As you can see, Zach Melcher's name is on the presentation. He's been exceedingly helpful in sort of preparing this and getting us ready, and a great addition to the town government, so I wanted to plug that out at the beginning. So I wanted to start, if you'll bear with me, to take just a few minutes to look through the finances and kind of do big picture down to the individual projects. So as you can see, if you look at our total fund balance, we're about $17.3 million right now in our fund. We have appropriations encumbrances, meaning money we've pledged to spend to fund other projects that hasn't yet been spent, of, you know, approximately $10 million. The biggest chunk of that, obviously, is for the Rexplex that we approved years ago and has been sitting there, but it's been accumulating interest the past couple of years at a pretty good clip, so good news, bad news? You know, bad news, good news? Then we have about $2.2 million in historic preservation, 1.3, you know, 1.4 in affordable housing, and a lot of that's heading out quickly, because they're finishing up a bunch of projects at the Housing Authority. So any questions, kind of on where we are? So that, you know, coming into this year, look at about $7 million. And then looking at what's going to come in for the rest of the year, plus in fiscal year 2025, I was pretty conservative, you know, estimating about 3.9, you know, we've gone through this with Lynn, but the 2.2 in the surcharge is, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars less than we usually get, but I figured, let's be conservative in our projections when we figure about what we can spend. So, you know, when we looked kind of at the pie for the year, or for, you know, the whole amount there, and I wouldn't say if it's for the year, it's for, you know, the fund, at about $10.7 million, we'd say was available. So then on the right, you know, I'll run through these projects in more detail, but on the right, you can see we've recommended about $2.4 million in projects, plus the bonding for the Rexplex, which won't kick in for this fiscal year, but will kick in for the next fiscal year, so I put it in there with an asterisk. And so we thought that was a reasonable amount of money to spend this year. I wanted to note that the committee realizes there are several large parcels of land in town that people are looking to preserve, and we want to make sure we have, you know, adequate funding on hand, in case one of those becomes available. So that's kind of the big picture on our financial situation. Any questions on that?
That's the reason for bonding around a dispensing patch right now.
Right. Right. And not the only reason, but one of the important reasons, I would say. And then, you know, I will talk now about the projects we didn't approve, before I go through line by line on the ones we did approve and recommend. The library north lawn, the request was for $763,000, and the committee, you know, we've been talking to the applicant, we've been talking to the library for the better part of a year about the project, and we felt that it could be done, it needs to be reduced in scope, and, you know, come with a lower amount, given the square footage. It's, you know, it's not a very big area and so forth. So that was the decision of the committee there, and we said, you know, please come back next year with, you know, a little bit more streamlined proposal. The second was a historic bell that was found at the middle school that the town facilities manager came forward with, wanted to create some sort of housing for it. And the issue with that is, A, we don't really know the province of the bell. It's got some markings on it, something about 1872, and I guess it sat in the middle of the middle school courtyard for decades, and then it got pushed into a closet at some point. But his idea was to create some sort of a housing for it, and under the CPC rules, like, you couldn't, I'll give you the classic example, be like Plymouth Rock, right? If you wanted to protect, if you wanted to restore Plymouth Rock, that would be historic preservation. If you wanted to build a structure around Plymouth Rock, you can't. Like, you can't make sort of new historical, you know, structures and so forth. So we basically went back and said to the applicant, you know, I think we, you know, they're working with the Historic Commission to try to figure out, you know, where the bell came from, and they're going to try to come back next year with, you know, a more, a proposal more around restoration. If we could find out, like, what the structure that held it was, and that was historic and so forth, we could probably, you know, get somewhere with it. But we passed on that one. And the final one was from the North Andover Historical Society for the Digitization of the North Andover Citizen, and that was a pretty easy call, because digitization of that media is not an allowable use of CPC funds per the Department of Revenue. We did find out that the state has grant programs available for that. We all thought it was a worthy project, and it would be a great addition and great project, and we're going to put them in touch with the state. Yeah, actually, I, you know, that's an email I need to write this week, is to just put them in touch with the right people at the state to get that done. So those are the three projects that were not recommended. Any questions on those? Just a quick overview of our spending by category, and for the purposes of this pie chart, I put the first year's bonding in, because I felt like, you know, if I said, if I left it out, it would kind of be saying, like, we weren't doing that much. And really, the story of this year is about open space and recreation, but we met all our minimums, you know, in terms of 10% for each of the three categories, open space, historic preservation, and affordable housing. So in that sense, it's all good. You know, if we didn't meet a category, say we only spent 5% on one item, we would have to segregate some funds and use them for that purpose at a later date, but that's not an issue this year. So any questions on that? Okay. Okay, affordable housing. We have two great projects this year. The first is for the Affordable Housing Trust, working with Bread &amp; Roses. It's come forward with a $2.7 million project for 14 to 16 brown court that will allow for four affordable housing units to be built there. And so it's a really good partnership in terms of Bread &amp; Roses and the Affordable Housing Trust are coming up with $2.2 million, and the CPC is coming in with $500,000. We felt like it was an excellent use of funds. It'll have an immediate impact, you know, on four families, and it's a great project, so we went, you know, full steam ahead on that. Any questions on that? Okay. The next one was the Housing Authority came for $75,000 for, to draw up the design for standby power systems at Folds Terrace in O'Connor Heights, senior disabled housing complexes. And so the idea is that they would come this year for the design, and next year for the purchase of those items. So the committee has that, you know, we have that kind of on our radar for next year. And we've previously funded generators at two other Housing Authority properties, and the idea is that we're able to keep a community room running, so if people need oxygen to recharge their phones, air conditioning during the summer, et cetera, if the power goes out, it's all set. Any questions on that? And then historic preservation. We had a few projects, and I'll spend some time on the first one, because I think it's the most involved and complex, and I think the committee worked exceedingly hard to come to a great solution on this one. So the 1836 Meeting House is also known as North Parish Church, and they came to us a few years ago, talking about preservation of the North Parish. And what they're coming for is $480,000 to do siding, insulation, fix the bell towers, do window glazing, and paint the exterior. Oh, sorry. Now, I'm going to talk about this project a little bit. The first thing I'm going to talk about is the historic aspect of it, because that is very, very clear-cut. So every time we get an application for a historic conservation or restoration project, we ask the question, what's the historical significance of the structure or item we're asked to restore? And so we rely on other authorities, like the Town Historic Commission, or, you know, kind of the gold seal of approval is the property on the National Historical Register. And in this case, this building is on the National Historical Register. And we all know it's got a bell from John Hancock, it's got a long and storied history, you know, in several iterations, and that, you know, occupies a prominent place in town and so forth. So if this were another building, if it were not a church building, this would be a very easy project to fund. We would say, yes, go ahead. In fact, we would do more than what's happening here. But it is a building with an active congregation in it. And some of you may have heard of the Acton decision, came down in 2019 from the Supreme Judicial Court. And that decision, basically, the town of Acton was sued and lost in court because they funded restoration of a historic church in Acton, and the Supreme Judicial Court said, "No, you shouldn't have done that." And they laid out a bunch of conditions, a very complex decision, that was actually not very clear-cut in terms of a majority of the justices all agreeing and on all the same reasons for not, for, you know, ruling the project unconstitutional. And it threw a lot of, I would say, mud and sand in the process of CPC grants, because churches have been getting CPC grants from the inception of the CPC program, including North Parish, which got funds in 2008, right? And it has a historic preservation restriction on it right now that lasts until 2034 from that project. So when the applicant came to us, we said, "This is a very difficult situation. You know, it's very unclear what the law is. There have not been other cases, so it's not like there was a precedent of Acton, and then all these different cases came up, and the Supreme Judicial Court said, 'Oh, this is okay, and this isn't.'" But we... North Parish, which got funds in, in 2008, right? And it has a historic preservation restriction on it right now, that lasts until 2034 from that project. So when the applicant came to us, we said, this is a very difficult situation, you know, it's very unclear what the law is, there have not been other cases, so it's not like there was a precedent of Acton, and then all these different cases came up, and the Supreme Judicial Court said, oh, this is okay, and this isn't. But we, we basically went to the applicant, and we said, here's the Acton decision, here's what it said, here are its key holdings. And this is, you know, over, probably over a year ago, and we said, like, if you're gonna come to us, we have to be able to answer these questions. Because we do not want to be in court, like, on this. We understand it's a historic building, we're very hesitant to fund church projects, and we want to make sure that whatever we're doing meets, you know, past its constitutional muster. So we went to them and did this, and they came back to us, and their proposal dealt with these issues in a number of, I think, unique ways, and kind of created what I think is probably a groundbreaking path for churches to get funded in the Commonwealth. And so I'll talk a little bit about what they did. So one thing they did, and they've done this, you know, some time ago, is they set up a 501(c)(3) organization called Friends of the 1836 Meeting House. And that's the body that will, that applied for the grant, and that body also holds all the funds for the running of the building, as opposed to the congregation. So if I was gonna look at, if you're gonna look at it and basically say, like, Friends of the Meeting House are responsible for fixing things in the church, and the congregation is in charge of paying the pastor and setting the religious curriculum and everything. So they're two separate bodies, you know, and the 501(c)(3) allows people to make donations, you know, maybe some people wouldn't be comfortable donating to a church, but they like the building, they want to donate it, allows that to happen as well, and they've been doing a lot of private fundraising. So they came and they said, we've segregated these costs. One of the big factors in the Acton case, too, was what are you preserving? And in the Acton case, one of the things they preserved was stained glass windows. And the, and of course, the Supreme Judicial Court said, stained glass windows are an article of worship, you know, when you go to a church, you see religious figures in stained glass windows. So therefore, the state is intermingled with religion to create, you know, to preserve those stained glass windows, or make new stained glass windows. And that is, you know, not constitutional under the way they looked at it, and said that was wrong. So what the church did is they basically came up with all the renovations they wanted to do, and how close they were to historic preservation versus, on the other side, sort of anything that could be construed as supporting a religious function. Because the, essentially, the way that, you know, the Supreme Judicial Court laid this out, is they said, any money going to a religious building under historic preservation can't have a motivating purpose to aid the church, it can't substantially aid the church in their religious endeavors, and it also has to avoid the risk of intermingling church and state. In other words, are we telling the church how they should be doing their things, the government, that that's, you know, not, not okay, et cetera. And so, you know, I would say, when they came with their application, they also, they addressed each one of these arguments, and they said, like, hey, if we were a religious congregation, and we were not a historic church, it wouldn't cost us that much to run the building, and we wouldn't have these costs. We also have to do things in a way that maintains the original historic character of the building, right, which I think most North Andover residents would agree is iconic, and occupies a prominent place in town. And they said, okay, you know, we are, we are using this 480,000 dollars to focus on the exterior of the building, so that it's sealed and, you know, protected from the inside. They're spending other monies on the inside of the church, because that's closer to, you know, the actual worship and exercise of religion. You know, so, long story short, they laid that out, we brought that to our town council, Ms. O'Connor, she reviewed it very carefully and wrote a response to the committee. It said, like, you are okay to go ahead and fund this, that I don't see any constitutional issues or any, any problems, and we think we've met the three factor test. And so the committee took that under advisement, and we deliberated for quite some time. I think some, you know, I want to make sure all the facts are out there, because I want to be entirely transparent. We had had some other, we had had some other churches come in the interim between the Acton decision and this application, come to us and say, can you fund a project? And in those cases, we said no. In some, in one case, St. Paul's Church, you know, I would say it was, like, the year after the Acton decision, we really hadn't seen how it shook out. We also didn't have the same sort of surety around the three factor test, how it was met, and so forth, and so on. The Trinitarian Church also came to us last year, I don't know if they actually turned an application in, but they, you know, explored this with us, and we, and that was actually for the interior of the church, kind of, you know, area over the altar and so forth, and we thought that was a little too close, you know. And so really, for the committee, what it came down to was, I think the major, the major point we were debating was, okay, this is okay, this meets constitutional muster, you know, and this is sort of a pathway. And our choice is to say, like, you know, some people felt, like, hey, maybe we should just say, hey, this is the path, and everybody can come forward next year with a project, and they can do the same thing, and everyone has the same sort of resources. And then, you know, on the other side, we're saying, like, if we wait another year for them to do this work, will it cost the taxpayers more money because construction prices are going up? Would there be more damage? Would, you know, et cetera. And they have done, you know, everything right and by the book. And so we agreed and recommended funding for this project, basically saying, well, it's okay, and we've also, I've sent notes out to contacts both at St. Paul's and the Trinitarian Church to say, like, here's everything that North, that North Parish, the Friends of the Meeting House did, to make sure that their application, you know, was appropriate, and this is a pathway for you, if you want to go forward. So, you know, we welcome your participation. We know that, you know, churches are faced with all sorts of pressures on construction, dwindling membership, et cetera, and like, churches are where history is made, it's a big part of the culture. I mean, we wouldn't be here in Massachusetts speaking English if, you know, if not for religion, and it's definitely a big part of our cultural legacy here in Massachusetts. So I know it was rather long-winded, but any questions on that, our decision on that one?
Great job following, you know, making sure everything was compliant, and doing the due diligence, and, you know, setting that pathway forward for the other churches in the town, so, nice job. Next time you won't be so long-winded, you just say, hey, just like, just like we did with the Meeting House.
Is there any chance, so once, should it all go through? At what point does the state, like, will they, might they look at it and say?
So the state doesn't look at anything?
That's what I, okay.
And, you know, I'm glad you asked that question, and I wrote this down as a note. I went on the state database of projects. So we maintain that every CPC chair goes in and puts in all the projects into a state database, and it's part of the funding process. I went in and did a search for all the church, church projects funded since 2020, not even 2019. There are 150 projects funded in church. And I could read through a bunch of them and say, like, you know, from what I'm reading, this doesn't seem like it meets constitutional muster, but they haven't been sued. So I don't think it's, the state is not really the
Pleasing it.
Person leasing it, you know, I think it's, you know, litigance in some cases.
Did a lot of due diligence on, or they did, and I'm really glad to hear the explanation.
Certainly, the name we want to maintain.
Yeah, I completely agree, but I think the, your, your opening statement about it saying, listen, if this was not a church, it was a clear-cut historic project, wouldn't, if it didn't have that complicating factor, it's a bit of a slam dunk, you know, for approval. But I did have a few questions, and I think you just kind of answered the first one, was if there was any case law tested on this type of structure, the 501(c)(3), the, the kind of the workaround that came up. So there's nothing that's been tested on that yet?
No, no.
And with regards to the composition of the 501(c)(3), it's almost like a rebranding of North Parish Church, right, as the 1836 Meeting House. And this may be more of a question for, for town council. In the decision, was the fact that the, was the composition of the managers of the 501(c)(3) at all considered in the decision? And what I'm saying is, if it's the same people who run the church that run the 501(c)(3), is it a distinction without a difference? And that's, I guess my, I don't know if that was considered or not.
I did just share the legal opinion with all of you, so you would have it?
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I, I would say, I think she noted that, she also noted a lot about sort of public access, and, and that's something that I, that was in their application that I didn't mention, so I'm glad I can mention it now. Just in the fact that they held the town, they held, you know, an open invite for the MLK Day celebration, they run a food pantry, and that they, you know, have frequent events and allow people to get, to get in and see that. We would also put a, you know, restriction in the funding agreement, and, you know, I think we, you know, sort of started to set the precedent, and when we fund these projects, we want to make sure there's meaningful public access. So we would, you know, include that in the notes, and I think, I think everybody involved agrees that's a good idea, that they want that to be proceeded.
All right, I guess I should have two more follow-up questions. Let me preface all this with, I think this is a good faith, creative effort to find a solution to a property that the town clearly wants to make sure is preserved. And maybe this is being the decision, I go ahead and poke through it, but the fact that the property is owned by North Parish, I'm guessing that doesn't, because that, I think section two would be substantially aiding, where as the owner, they're on the hook for it, so anything that, is that, that, any dollar, right?
We did raise that issue as a committee, and we didn't get a clear-cut answer on that. We basically said, like, it would be even more clear-cut if the 501(c)(3) were the owner of the parcel and the, and the property.
Right, right, okay. I forgot my last question, all right.
Can I share a tidbit about North Parish Church that most people don't know, but those of us who went around that do know, Eva Hamari's grandfather painted the North Parish Church and became a UNICEF Christmas card in the 1960s. A lot of you know who Eva is.
Yeah.
I know you do.
She's my neighbor, yeah.
Yeah. Yes, and I believe there's a picture downstairs in, in the clerk's office, and I have one in my living room, a small picture of one that, yeah, pretty cool.
Yeah, it's very cool.
I guess, since, since, this is my last question, since the deliberations on this and kind of the finding of, of it being fundable, for, if that's even a word, have you heard from St. Paul's or other applicants who have been turned down in the past?
I've heard from the Trinitarians, and actually, I'm, I have another line out, I gotta pursue another avenue with St. Paul's, because I haven't gotten a reply over email.
Partly called Trinitarian is a lot trickier, being interior and all that stuff, and they'd already, they already funded the project, there's a lot of things that fail, but, okay. St. Paul's is probably the best analog for this one, okay.
Is the 501(c) already established, or did they establish it?
They established it already.
To follow this path?
No, I think they, I think they, you know, I would, I, I could look it up and email you, but I know that, you know, part of it was not just for this reason, but also to take donations.
I think they, I think they've had it for a little bit.
No, it makes sense to have it, I was just curious.
Okay, but all the other ones are much shorter, no, there are better things to do tonight. Stevens Estate Stables, requested by the town, $150,000 to stabilize the project. We saw Steve Foster and agreed that it was a good first phase, and I think we all know that there will be more to come in this project, but this is kind of sealing it up and getting it sturdy, so it doesn't, so that it's able to be worked on in the future. Questions on that? Okay, open space. I'd be very quick on this, because, you know, Dee's presentation was comprehensive. And when we, in our discussion of this, we basically, you know, one of the considerations was making sure that no one, no one thought that a 25, if we did a 25-year bond, that it would be assuming that the CPC, CPC and CPA program would be part of North Andover in 25 years. And maybe to save on interest, you know, the committee and the town manager, I think, came to a consensus that a 10-year GO bond would be better than a 25. So that's what we were proposing, and I don't, not even sure that it's, you know, our purview to decide how and when the town bonds, but we, you know, took the town manager's consideration about, you know, how much debt the town wants to take off. Some people wanted to do it even in five or three, and we agreed on 10, so. And so the only thing I'll point out here is, when I look at this debt schedule, the committee knows that, you know, we have to set aside those funds in all those years. So, you know, a good, say roughly, starting at a third, and probably by the time we're done, working down to like 20% of our, of our revenue, will probably be less by then with, you know, everything going up, but we'll be dedicated to this project. So we'll be paying those GO bonds out of that funding every year.
And CPC bonds are not a part of our debt capacity, or they don't impact that at all, right, they're separate?
They do not impact that at all.
Okay.
More my thought process was that if we do too short of a term, it would affect our ability to spend moving forward. So our local contribution usually is around $2 million a year, and when we looked at a five-year bond, it was almost three-fourths of that. And so it didn't really seem like a great idea. Now, what happens is, and Bill and I have discussed this, if in two years, for some horrible reason, we decide to leave CPA, what happens is they look at your cash on hand, make a determination on whether or not you could pay out the bond in its entirety. If you can, that's what you do. And if not, you continue with the CPA assessment until you pay off the debt. There's two options, you either could do the entire 3% and pay quickly, or you actually lower your percentage down to just pay the debt. So there are some mechanisms in place if a withdrawal was contemplated.
So we're committing that to the length of law?
We're committing to pay, yeah.
So future CPCs cannot say, we're not gonna fund this anymore, once this committee's made.
Or the town really can't say, we're, we're, with town, because they were withdrawing from CPC, if I'm hearing you right, but this still survives now?
Yes.
It's not a, it's not a, then your debt goes with it.
That's great, that's great.
Right, let's try it, see what happens.
Next is Patriots Memorial Park, which you all know, right next to the library, a great project from the North Andover Improvement Society, a 501(c)(3). They've had a lot of tree damage over the last year between drought and rain and so forth, as sure as we've all seen. And this proposal would restore the landscape to the Olmsted Brothers' design from 1922. This was like a borderline, is it open space, is it historic preservation? And we decided it was, you know, well worth funding, so that's to kind of do that, which is a great sort of citizens' thing, and working closely with the town, so it's a win-win.
Are we, sorry, are we using any of our tree money for the trees that need to be?
So I'm sure we will, we're in the middle of doing the tree management plan right now, so the consultant is on board. We'll receive an initial payment sometime, probably, I would guess, in April, May. So we certainly can offset some of their costs.
So who, and who's doing the design of, like, of the restoration work at Patriots?
You know what, it's in the application, so I don't remember offhand.
Last time, when we first did it years ago, they did have a professional designer who came in and was pretty familiar with Olmsted, and they tried to match, I was on the committee at the time, and they tried to match it to the original plan. So it's not meant for recreational use, so I need to make that clear, people don't understand that, and they get kind of offended, they're gonna play ball or football or whatever. Part of the protective covenants were, and it's written right into the deed, that it's for passive, quiet enjoyment, so read a book, go for a walk, that kind of thing. But a lot of people don't know, and all of a sudden you look out the window, I'm like, oh, they're playing volleyball in the park that they're not supposed to. But we'll get the message out. There are. But there's a lot of parks in the neighborhood, too.
Not really.
Well, there's a big middle school field right there.
That's not going to be.
For at least the time being.
And then the last project to talk about, I really love this project because I think it's a great example of what the CPC can do, CPA can do. So, you know, Ted Kelly, just a normal citizen, looked at the boat launch area on Lake Kachikowick, kind of behind Butcher Boy, across the street from the, you know, the side of Butcher Boy off 133, and said, like, you know, this isn't very easy to use, and it's not well-maintained, I'd like to fix this. I think he thought it was gonna be, like, I'll go ask for some money, we'll get it fixed, we'll be done. No, it turned into like a part-time job, because he's been working on it for three years. And, you know, incredibly complex project, and I, I think he deserves, you know, a ton of credit. The town engineers and the town DPW, John Bogezi, deserve a lot of credit for working very creatively. You know, we have the idea that it's in the reservoir that's very important, it's next to a state road that adds another level of complexity and so forth. And, you know, I think, I want to be very clear that this is a lake access project and not a boat ramp, that this is a redesign of the entire area, that it will, you know, be a nice kind of, I wouldn't call it like a park, but there's definitely a parklet atmosphere to it with some, some seating, reorganized parking, boat storage, and, you know, where the expense is, is, you know, rebuilding that structure. I mean, there used to be a pump house there, and a lot of the retaining wall and so forth, not in great shape. I won't say anymore about that, but it really needs to be fixed. This is really a, you know, a great example of civic pride in North Andover on behalf of Mr. Kelly, and we felt it was important, and this is the third tranche of funding. We did, like, schematic design, then full design, and then this is for the construction. So this is, this is what will get it done, and they can, you know, go out to bid. So this is, this is what will get it done and they can, you know, go out to bid when they have these funds secured and get this project done.
Is there likely going to be more boat wreck availability in this space? That is something I hear about a lot, so will there be additional?
You know, I, I don't know like the count now and the count afterwards. But I do know that, you know, Peter Boyden was consulted and that a lot of people have been involved, so.
There's a lot more space too, right?
Hopefully there'll be some more, yeah.
They did such a nice job, like you said, it's been three years in the process, right? So.
Yeah, they really did.
I just want to go fishing.
He'll never do that again.
That would be dangerous right now.
Oh, it's brutal, yeah.
Yeah, he'll never make any requests again.
And the last project is the Town Common Bentstead that the town has come forward to effect a new handicap accessible stage to replace the outdated structure on the common. I don't have a picture because you can't really find a picture. It's going to be 600 square feet, those are kind of our conditions, which is slightly bigger than what's there right now. But it'll be made in more permanent accessible material and so forth. Need approval from the old center, you know, Historic District Commission and, you know, kind of a very needed, needed project, so.
Is this a permanent structure with foundations and?
Yes, no, no, no roof, right. The only pictures we could find had roofs in them and that caused more of a stir than, than anything else, so we said.
Does it have a ramp up the back or something?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Current structure is not in very good condition.
I mean, it's certainly not accessible and it's fairly standing.
Standing, so.
It'll be welcome change.
Do you have a read from the OC, OCHD yet or no? What's up?
April 2nd.
April 2nd?
We're going on April 2nd, I believe.
Okay, next week?
Yeah, and I think, you know, what it sounds like is everyone's really flexible to do whatever works in terms of to accomplish that goal of making it safer and, you know, historically compliant. I don't think there's a lot to it. And the only other thing that I didn't put in the presentation is 50,000 administrative funds. We usually return most of it to the, to the fund, but we need it for, if we need to do assessments or anything like that or hire a lawyer for any reason, we could do that. So, that's it.
Nice job, Bill.
Yeah, thank you so much. Some good projects.
All gave our two cents along the way, so.
Thank you.
Should I leave this on?
Yeah, I can take care of it after.
Okay.
All right, we're going to move on to new business and have a discussion about fees for our EV charging station.
I just worry.
So we just had our first, well, not our first EV charging station, but our first of five that we're doing, or four locations that we're doing with grant funds. And so there is now one at the police station, which is great because now our community service coordinator can charge her car without coming down here. Part of the grant is, condition is that they have to be public for some period of time. So with that, the board needs to decide whether you want to charge a fee to use that electricity. The charging stations are going to be at the high school, the school administration building and this new senior center in addition to the police station. They're all supposed to be in by June 30th because that's our deadline for the grant. And hopefully we're on track with that, we believe we are, but we just need to confirm with the installers. So you have time before the rest of them are in, but asking around to different towns on our listserv, attach the agenda, there were different fees that different cities and towns use. And then there's also the recommended fee that ChargePoint, who is the manufacturer of the charging stations, recommends based on their information that they have. Believe it or not, this is not really easy information to find. You'd think that you'd be able to see how much, you'd think somebody would have a list somewhere of the charging, public charging stations and how much they charge, but they don't, so. Right now, as part of our contract with ChargePoint, we have, the first year has been paid, so there's not really that much of a need except for the actual cost of electricity. The fee's supposed to try to encumber, like encompass any repairs, maintenance, your cloud costs and things like that. But we don't have any of those for the first year. The only thing that we'll have is the actual use of the electricity, so.
And what was the amount you recommended?
So it's actually point, 20 cents per kilowatt hour. It says 25, but when I looked at the recommendation from ChargePoint, that's actually a typo, so it should be 20 cents per kilowatt.
And that covers the maintenance and, or is that just?
No, that will cover the electricity use. And then you should revisit it annually. And then we'll be able to have a better idea of what, any maintenance charges are, what the cloud charges are.
We can adjust it and?
And you can adjust it. And then also, the program allows you to just help them collect the fees and then put them against your yearly maintenance or your yearly charges for using the internet and all of that, so.
So how does that equate to like real hours? So is that like literally 25 cents per hour, so if someone's charging?
Kilowatt hour?
Yeah, how does that equate to like an hour?
So if you look at the little chart, it looks like it equated to $4.14 for two hours. Is that how you read it? That's how I read it, yeah.
Well, but that includes the 75 cents, so you take, you'd take $1.50 off of that, right? So, yeah.
And a two-hour charge gets you, how much do we even know? I know it varies depending on the stations.
Yeah. And the reason why they charge a station time rate, which I don't think you need right now, but that's to get people to move their cars.
So you don't stay while you're not charging.
Some, yeah, some cities or towns charge a penalty if you're there for more than two hours because they need the station freed up for other people to use it.
Now, I know people who have electric vehicles and I'm hearing they're about $50 a month for a home. But I guess that would make sense if you were doing it every day and you're saying it's about $4, so.
Well, we have a municipal electricity rate, so our rate is a little bit lower.
That's great.
Which makes a difference, I would say.
Because we clearly need to minimum break even.
Right.
We're not going to subsidize as I'm going to the gas station.
Which is why I suggested using ChargePoint's recommended price for now because we don't have any experience in it.
And then we'll figure out how like the actual cost is.
And then next year we'll have all the data of what it's costing us to run that station.
Do you, this is a little, in the means, do you know how ChargePoint works? Like, do people have an account with them or do they just use a regular, like their cards?
Use an app.
Okay.
Yeah, and we even have to, we have an app. So we can tell when we're using it and, you know, obviously ours, our cards are programmed to not charge for our town vehicles.
But we'll know how much we are using.
So we'll be able to see, right, how much we've used it and then we'll be able to see what the public's.
You can only use the app, right? You can't like tap a credit card?
You can only use it, yeah, the, the town has the pass cards in there.
And then does ChargePoint send money back to the town or?
They can, or we can just have them keep it and then it goes against your maintenance or your yearly fees that you have to pay, which is probably the easiest way.
I guess we'll see. You gotta do it for a little while.
It's hard to predict right now because we don't know how much use they're going to get. You know, we're gonna restrict them somewhat because the cars are going to stay there overnight, so the, that charging stations aren't going to be available when the town car's there overnight. So it really is going to be sort of during the day, depending on what station you're on. Like the ones behind here.
Two hours.
Yeah, and the ones behind here, you know, usually the two cars are parked overnight, so there really wouldn't be any time except during the day for people to charge their cars. But those are not public back here, those were done a few years ago.
Do you know what level our charges are?
Two.
Okay, so level two can get us, gives you 25 to 50 miles per hour. Just to give you an idea, if you're there for two hours.
You're going to get.
Yeah.
How many municipal electric cars do we have, right?
These are not fast cars.
We have four, we have four now.
I think that seems more than reasonable and we should be subsidizing, so, yeah.
I just add, just as a reminder, the Green Communities is requiring all the vehicles to go to electric. They actually were requiring it this year and they gave us, they gave all the communities a one-year lease because the vehicles are so hard to get. I don't know if that will continue or not, but we will have to continue to put in additional EV charging stations if that is the direction that they're going.
So every municipal vehicle has to be?
Even police cars?
Even police, all have to buy when?
So it was supposed to be this year and they just extended it by a year.
Oh.
I think the implementation of it was more difficult than expected because with the take-home vehicles, there was a lot of conversation about how we do that in people's homes. Will we be installing the chargers, how do we get them back, how do we, right?
I mean, that's really complicated to.
It became complicated and so I think they decided to move it off, but the, still for next year, it's still on the docket.
Yeah, and there's also a, an issue of mechanics to work on these cars, right? And so, and, and the inventory of getting them, so.
What, what percentage of our fleet has flipped over?
Of course, there's a lot of questions that need to be answered in order to get a whole fleet.
How much of our fleet is electric now?
We have about four vehicles right now. It's the, some of the inspection vehicles, the one at the PD.
Good, a long way to go.
And there's one more.
It's just new purchases, not.
It's all things you've purchased recently, I guess.
It's a lot, I don't, I mean, yeah, it's a lot.
What's it all, these vehicles?
It should be as you please.
Yeah.
It's not fire named.
No, it is as you replace it.
Okay, oh, okay.
And it doesn't have to be electric per se. It just has to have less mileage use than, it has to fall into.
A certain category.
A certain category of mileage.
Because the pickup.
More reasonable.
Well, it's hard, like the pickup trucks and all that, they were, the, the avenues that they require.
These cars are charged.
Well, just to, just to install a charging station for your home is, it's not cheap. It's, you know, I had a client that did it and it's not cheap.
All right, I'll take a motion if anybody has any of their.
I'll move that the select board set the fee for public use of the electric vehicle charging stations at 20 cents per kilowatt hour.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second, any further questions or discussion?
Just that you'll be monitoring it to make sure that our numbers are, are good. It will take a little while, but we can't be, we, we can't be providing fuel for the people of town, but they've got to pay for it. That's it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Our next item is the request from the North Andover baseball to use Water Street, Main Street, Waverly Road and Dana Street on April 27th from 8:30 to 10:30 for their opening day parade, which is always a fun event and everything's in order.
I'll move approval.
Second half.
I have a motion and a second, any further comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Looking forward to that event as usual, hopefully it doesn't rain.
It's really fun.
I know, so they've gotten rained out the past couple.
But yeah, I kept thinking I was missing it, it wasn't, it was raining.
It's raining, it's raining, we don't need any more rain.
No, we don't, it's pouring into the marina.
The next one, our next item is to vote on a tiebreaker policy for quotes and bids.
We don't currently have a policy for what we do when. This is literally a tiebreaker policy. We don't have a policy for what we do when we have a tie for a bidding. And so what we're recommending is that we basically either do a coin toss or draw names out of a hat and that's what the recommendation is of the inspected, inspected gentleman as well. It's going to be like, it's going to be like a football game, it's going to be exciting.
We'll draw a crowd.
Yeah, you know, so we're just asking you to update the policy to include the quoting language.
How often does that happen?
Yeah, I was just going to ask.
Right on the penny. Since I've been here once.
Like right to the penny, like, really?
And so, and this only comes in after you've done a second heat? Is the second heat so?
The second heat, it's either or, so you can either do a second heat or you can do some blind selection process.
And what's the argument against doing the second heat? I'm sorry, I just, I know, I see it, I'm reading it, it seems the nose, but.
There could be a time factor where you, you know, you don't want to give, you don't want to waste any more time trying to get your project going, so you have to give them time in order to submit bids for a second heat. And I, that seems a little risky to me, but again, it's only happened once and it actually didn't come down to anything because they also have to be responsible bidders. So in the situation that we actually had, it wasn't technically a tie because one of the bidders wasn't qualified.
Chances of this happening.
So that's why it kind of sparked us to be like, oh wow, we don't even have a tiebreaker policy.
And my issue with the second heat is that what, you might have a situation where somebody then underbids and you end up with eight doors.
Understood.
Especially with the sponsor.
Absolutely.
And, and the determination for an identical bid is just financial? Are you able to look at any other kind of factors, say, okay, they're identically bid, but this one's got more experience, we're going with them?
Not during this process, no.
I'll vote mine.
I'm trying to imagine being a vendor sitting there and having my job decided by a coin toss, saying if I'd only bid a penny lower.
We could do paper oxes, but I feel like that would be.
That would be more spectacle action.
Wiki for vendors, okay.
I'll take a motion.
I'll move that the select board adopt the tiebreaker policy for quotes and bids as presented. I think I'll second that, because we're involved in gambling.
I have a motion and a second, any other questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Our next item is to appoint Karen Roton to the, to the Board of Registitors. I'll take a motion.
I'll move the select board appoint Karen Roton to the Board of Registitors through March 31st, 2027.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second, any comments, questions, no? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And move on to our consent items. We're accepting a donation from the library trustees in the amount of $6,500 to be used for staff development and books. I'll take a motion.
I'll move the select board accept the donation from the library trustees.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Do you know those people? Did you take a bus?
It's our most well-attended meeting.
And they're not, and they're not angry.
Where are you all bed? No, Dee cleverly, I'll close the door.
I would talk to you, but, okay. Oh, no, I, whatever.
Do we go on trustees?
Oh, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you to the library trustees for all their generous donations to the library. Next, I'll take the approval of the minutes for March 13th. Has everybody had a chance to review?
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're going to move to the select board updates. Obviously, we have a last meeting for one of our colleagues. So I'd first like to ask our representative Adrian Ramos to come up. I think we have a citation for you.
Good evening, wow, this is quite a showing, Dick, huh?
So, wow.
Wow.
Well, they're mostly family, so.
So you strong-iron them, no, I mean, that's even, that's even more important. So I'm here, I care, I'm here tonight, I get to be here as representing the full legislature. So I'm here on behalf of the House of Representatives and the Senate. But I want to thank you for your, for your time and dedication to this town. Where are you going?
It's coming, it's coming to you.
So I, I, you know, as the one delegate in the North Andover delegation or the one person from North Andover, I have seen closely the impact that you have had on the select board. And boy, you have been here through some really tough times in the last few years. And you still chose to, to come back for one last term, so we are very lucky to have you here. And I, I was thinking about it today, I wondered how many hours, if we added up. And I, I was thinking about it today. I wondered how many hours, if we added up twelve years, right? How many hours? That's probably equivalent to at least one, if not two to three years of full-time work, right?
Days.
So, a, and, and you just gave your time and you, and you had to, you know, you listened to people through their ups and their downs and it's, it's not an easy feat. And you did that, you know, really, um, and, and for, for this town and, and we are, are, have been so lucky to have you. So, like I said, I get to play both, uh, representative and, and senator today, um, but I, but I, I won't be quite as long-winded as, as my colleagues in the, in the Senate. I gotta give a dig where I can. Um, so I will start with my own citation and this is from both myself and Representative Winn, who could not be here today. And it says, "Be it hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Richard Valancourt in recognition of your years of dedication and service to the town of North Andover. The entire membership offers its, extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success." So, thank you. And from the Senate, it's, uh, it says, "Be it known from the State Senate that Massachusetts Senate hereby extends its congratulations to Richard Valancourt in recognition of your dedication and service to the residents of North Andover during your twelve years elected to the select board. And be it further known that the Massachusetts Senate extends its best wishes for continued success. That this citation is duly signed by the President of the Senate and attested to in a copy transmitted by the Clerk in the Senate. And this is signed by both Senator Feingold and Senator Tarr."
Dick, we have, I think, a lot of your past colleagues that sat around this table with you and they have a couple of words they'd like to share.
I think you ran away. I don't know why you ran.
I saw you coming.
Uh, so you will probably notice some familiar faces standing beside me. Um, no doubt familiar for many reasons, but in this room certainly familiar because at one time or another, we all sat behind that table next to Dick Valancourt. Serving as a member of the select board, as you all know, is a rewarding opportunity to give back to the town countless hours spent in an effort to make North Andover better. And that would not be possible without hard-working colleagues. And as though, as, as colleagues, we didn't always share the same opinion, we always shared the same goal of how to do right by North Andover. Serving in this role can come with so many challenges, but it can also come with so many rewards. And one of those rewards is sitting by hard-working, dedicated people. On behalf of this group, who has one time or another sat alongside you, Dick, we wanna congratulate you on twelve years of, of service. You're a great partner in a job where we rarely get to hear these words. Thank you.
Where you wanna?
Is it my turn?
We haven't said anything. I'll open it up to. Uh, I'll open up to my colleagues.
I guess the shortest amount of time certainly, you're an amazing example of what it means to do this job and to do it well and always keep all of these folks in, in the town at the center of every decision we make. You may be missed, but you're certainly not going anywhere, so.
Thanks, Mark.
Thanks, Dick.
I think Laura will take care of the laundry list of your accomplishments because we needed a really, um, large writing area for that. So, uh, I've never met someone who is so dedicated and will take on any task that is asked of you. Um, for me personally, your steadfast leadership over the la, my last three years of service has been, um, a true guide for me to follow also. Some of us are a little more fiery than others and when I can look at you and the way that you lead and the way that you always, um, have the best interest of the entire community at heart, it is something to be so proud of. Uh, it's something we're all incredibly grateful for. So, uh, I just wanna thank you for your service and thank you for giving, um, those of us who have not been here for twelve years um, a, a great, um, uh, guide to go by. Thank you.
I think people have already said a lot of things I would have liked to have said, but one thing that I've noticed that when you, you do lead, you do it as a gentleman and a statesman. You come to the meetings extremely well-prepared. You are ready to work and work hard. In the last couple of years too, that you have, you're really going out with a bang. You've taken on huge and important projects that required a lot of leadership. So, and I'd, I'd like to thank you for that, but I'd also like to, to thank your family. Because to be an elected official, whether it be at this town level or state or federal level, it's, um, it's a family decision and they're all in on it, um, to help and support you. And you have a wonderful family and I'm sure you've fallen on them for added support and ideas, especially your lovely wife who is over there. She's great. But, um, it's been a pleasure. It's, it's, we've had ups and downs with the town and, and, you know, struggling financially, but, boy, have we come out on top these last few years. We just persevered and, and, uh, you did your homework and you did it well. So I say thank you.
So a lot has been said, um, but I just wanna thank you for your leadership, your experience. You've welcomed all of us under your, in your wing and got, you know, guided us and shown us that we really are one community and we must, we do what's best for North Andover. Um, there's so many things to list in your twelve years. I tried to get a comprehensive list of what has happened. Um, but some of the highlights are, of course, our facilities, Master Plan One with the fire station and town hall and the ABCC and senior center and school admin building and the DPW building. Of course, Amazon, we're gonna have, um, a grand opening next month, um, so that's a huge asset to the town. Your work and dedication to four hundred Great Pond Road, um, the purchase of that and the protection of our watershed and how important that is to our community. Um, the Stevens Estate, we've seen just in the past year what a wonderful partnership that is with Fireside and how you've advocated for that. We've been through a lot as a community during your tenure, the gas explosions, um, unprecedented flooding. Um, and you have always been there and advocated for our community and our residents and what we needed. Um, we've seen the implementation of a master plan, um, and you've been through the hiring of a town manager, um, our police chief and our fire chief, so lots of things. And of course, like Jenna said, you've always stepped up and been part of the community, of the committees, um, the Affordable Housing Trust, four hundred Great Pond Road, master plan implement, implementation. Um, so I, we just thank you so much for your service and your impact will have, will affect generations to come.
Well, thank you, Laura. And of course, you know, all of these people all had some major to do with that. It wasn't one person, never is, and that's the, the great thing about being on this board is it's not one person, it's, it's, it's a group. And we all work together. Um, so thank you for that. Thank you, well.
Dick, I almost forgot. This is from, this is from the town.
Um, I, I can have some words to share if you bear with me for a moment. So, I'm gonna read a little bit of it. I'll try to be as brief as I can. Uh, so as I stand here tonight, I'm filled with profound sense of gratitude and reflection. It has been an honor and a privilege to serve as a select board member for the past twelve years. Tonight marks the end of a chapter in my life, but also symbolizes the beginning of a new journey for both myself and this community. Together, we have faced challenges, celebrated victories and worked tirelessly to make our town a better place for all who can, call it home. From budgetary decisions to community initiatives, from interest, infrastructure improvements to fostering a sense of unity. Each decision made and every action taken was done with the utmost dedication and commitment to serving the best interests of North Andover. But beyond the policies and the projects, what truly makes this experience remarkable are the relationships forged along the way. I am deeply grateful for the collaboration, support and camaraderie, camaraderie shared with my fellow board members. Uh, the town staff, community leaders, and most importantly, the residents who entrusted me with this responsibility. As I bid farewell to my role as a select board member, I do so with a heart full of appreciation and hope. Appreciation for the memories we've created, the progress we've achieved and the bonds that we've formed, and hope for the bright future that lies ahead, guided by the values of integrity, inclusivity, inclusivity and service that have defined our collective efforts. I would like to thank my family, friends and supporters who've helped me over the years, building signs in my garage, addressing envelopes, showing up at meet and greets, holding signs, workshop and campaign slogans. Some that could never be put on signs, Bill. Sorry. Bill had some great slogans, but they were never gonna make it to a sign. I can assure you that. I have been blessed with the tremendous support over the years. Uh, I'd like to thank my family, Rick and Ashley, Jenna and William, Kelly and Burnett for their unwavering and constant support. Also, my grandchildren, Richie, Lila, Noah and Ben, just for being there when, you know, hugs were needed sometimes. Sometimes they were needed. Finally, I'd like to thank Kathleen, who is behind Seth, um, for always standing by my side. She was truly the one who had to deal with the highs and lows of this job firsthand. She provided counsel, support and always kept me grounded. While my time on the board may be ending, my commitment to serve in the community remains steadfast. I am no longer in a, as, I no longer hold an official title, but I will continue to advocate for the betterment of North Andover and contribute to its growth and prosperity in wherever I can, in whatever capacity I can. Thank you from the bottom of my heart for allowing me the opportunity to serve you. It has been an honor and a privilege I will always cherish and never regret. May our paths cross again and may legacy of our work endure for generations to come. Thank you. Well, let's see what I got. Something for the workshop. It says, "Richard Valancourt, North Andover Select Board, two thousand twelve to two thousand twenty-four."
We have one last, um, agenda item, item, which is our town managers. Oh, are there any other select board updates?
No.
No, we don't. Oh, yeah, don't forget to vote tomorrow. There is an election.
Election tomorrow. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions on my report as submitted. I also just wanna state that our friend Dick only has two months because June thirtieth, I'm sure we're gonna get him on a committee.
You're staying on the Affordable Housing Trust, right?
Yep. Well, there you go. Speak of us. Uh, but I'm happy to answer any questions on my official report. Uh, I've transitioned to a new reporting system just to make sure that we're in compliant with the open meeting law.
Do you wanna hit the highlights?
I can hit the highlights, sure. Um, so the highlights basically are that we're gonna have a power outage in about thirty-three minutes um, and it's gonna last till five AM. So if you got a notice at home, um, there are a lot of streets that are affected. Uh, if you do have any issues, please call, um, dispatch and they will get you in touch with the fire department, particularly if you are, don't have a generator and you have medical needs. Um, I, there is an OPERA survey that's gonna be going out to our randomly selected residents and businesses. It's the same survey they went out previously. We are required to do these communications for the OPERA funding. We are moving forward with an auction for a tax title property that's located on Andrew Circle. We are currently deficit spending for snow and ice. Hard to believe. It was two hundred thousand dollars, but we did unfortunately have to put out Sanders on Saturday, um, so that will be updated. I congratulate Officer Seaweed on his Police Officer of the Year award and the entire fire department on their Fire Department of the Year award. We have hired a new facilities, Assistant Facilities Director who will be starting in May. I'm serving on the MMA Policy Committee on Energy and Environment and Dee is serving on the MMA Policy Committee on Personnel and Labor Relations. There's an update here on the middle school and the Kittredge. We now have a designer for the Kittredge. And we have a building at the middle school. I don't know if you've seen it, but there's walls. Um, so it's pretty exciting. And, um, just as a reminder, the planning, the Finance Committee Public Hearing, did they move to the twenty-seventh? They moved to the twenty-seventh due to the election, so it's twenty-seventh at seven PM. And the planning board is continuing their public hearings on MBTA communities. So, thank you.
Any questions?
All good.
All good? All right, our next meeting is April eighth, uh, seven PM in the select board meeting. And I will hand it over to Dick to close this out.
I'll tell you, in twelve years, I've never made a motion to adjourn. Tonight I'll make, move, uh, what words? How do you even do it? All right, well, I'll make a motion to adjourn. All those in favor? All right, we're adjourned. Thank you all for coming tonight. It really means a lot. Thank you all.